With the, another significant difference on the Student Financial Aid Fund, you see that we budgeted 52.8 million. And that primarily is an increase in Pell Grants. So, we're hoping that we will process more Pell Grants for our students. But we'll see how that ends up at the end of the year. Okay, so moving into the Unrestricted Journal Fund. This is the overall summary. Where again, what we're comparing is where we ended the year, June 30th of 16, with the adopted budget of what we're proposing tonight for the 16-17 year. And then the change, either the increase or the decrease. Overall, our total revenues in the adopted budget were right at 123.9 million, or right at $124 million, which is an $11.2 million decrease from the prior year. Earlier, I mentioned, when we were talking about the contracts, is that our mandated cost one-time allocation decreased significantly. So, that's a big chunk of that, that decrease there, about 9.4 million of it. Our expenditures and other outgo, we are proposing a budget of $134.4 million, which is about a $1.98 million increase above where we were last year. And then, as you can see there, we are budgeting a significant deficit for the 16-17 fiscal year of 10.4 million, which would bring our fund balance down to $17.9 million. Of that deficit, so that $10.4 million deficit, 7.2 million of it is one-time expenditures that were allocated for specific purposes. And so, it's not like all of it is what we would consider a structural deficit. A lot of it is one-time. So, we have the $100,000 that has been allocated for the Presidential Search. We have, you know, $5.5 million that has been allocated for the Business Process Reviews and Design Thinking. The mandated cost carryovers that I discussed earlier, that's about 1.6 million. And then, we are undergoing a classification study where we've allocated about 50,000. So, that's kind of the detail of that 7.2 million dollars of items that have been allocated on a one-time basis.
Can I ask you a quick question about the Business Process Review and Design Thinking? Where will that take us to in terms of the, what it is that we hope to accomplish with that program?
So, what we're in the process of doing right now is implementing the Financial Aid piece. We are also implementing two major processes within Academic Services. And we have done a Business Process Review on Purchasing. With these funds, we would also like to continue with the Business Process Reviews for the rest of the entire Enrollment Services area. So, Admissions and Records and Counseling in those areas, as well as Human Resources and Payroll, and then getting into, you know, Accounts Payable and Warehouse and those types of things. And so, we really want to be able to cover the entire ERP system or the entire integrated computer system that we're using for all of our systems. We want to do this BPR to see if we can do things to make the lives of our employees, as well as the front door experience for our students, more relevant. This does also include some of the work that we will be doing after the website gets developed and designed, and some of the things that we might be able to do with the website as far as creating apps or something for the students on the Student Services side.
Vice President Gable.
So, the 5.48 million is to be spent in this next year?
I doubt it will all be spent in the next year. I think what we're finding is it's taking a little bit longer than we had anticipated to get some of the implementations done, because it is a huge undertaking and it is a huge time suck for our employees away from their original daily duties.
Right. And that, at the end of this year, if we do everything that we hope to do within this program, what will be left to do in that program, or will this be the end of it?
I would like to say this would be the end of it, because we have tried to plan for all of the various areas with this funding that we think will be covered. Now, once we get into things, you know, we don't know. So, this really was, I would say, an educated guess on what we thought it would take to finish all the areas that we need to look at.
Okay, Trustee Zia, did you have a question?
Yes, I do. Thank you, President Baxter. I have similar questions to Trustee Otto. That was one of my questions that Trustee Otto asked. Will this be the end of it? And how much, didn't we spend quite a significant amount of money on the Business Process Reviews and Design Thinking last year? I could be getting my years mixed up, but if, I thought we let some, a few contracts out or...
We did let some contracts out last year. I want to say it was around $1.5 million of what we're currently working on.
So, is that out of the 5 point, approximately 5.5 million? Or is that in addition to it?
No, this is in addition to it.
Okay, so in totality, we're looking at $7 million that we will be spending by the end of fiscal year 2017 on this process?
Potentially. But what we're doing is, we're basically re-engineering our software system that we use for everything on campus. And so, we're doing this with the hopes that it will improve our processes and we can extend the life of our current computer system that we have. If we had to go out and purchase a new computer software system, it would cost us anywhere from 20 to 30 million dollars to get it purchased and implemented on the campus. So, that's a huge undertaking.
And we need this, is this, why is it imminent that we spend an additional 5.5 million dollars? What happens if we don't approve this line item?
Well, I would say, the reason that we're doing it is to improve the experience for the students. So, we input our computer system back in 2000, and we haven't necessarily kept up with all of the new functions that are available to make it easier and simpler for the students to be able to apply, for them to register, you know, for them to look at a degree audit online. Everything that we're trying to do is for the betterment of the students and kind of goes along with the guided pathways that we're developing. So, we need the guided pathways so that we can have the degree audits, so that the students can look up to see where they are, know what classes they need to take, you know, what's missing. And so, it really is a very integrated method of looking at it and trying to improve everything across the board.
Well, I get that, and I absolutely agree. We need to do, make enhancements where it's more accessible and it's more user-friendly. However, it's over half of our deficit for this year. I mean, it's significant. And what I'd like to understand is what are we getting as far as a cost-benefit analysis goes? What are we getting in return? Is this just a review? Does it also entail implementation? Will we be done with this and hopefully have it operational and ready to use? Or will we have to keep spending money on this piece?
This estimate does include implementation costs. So, but like I said, it is an estimate based upon the Business Process Reviews that we did already in 15-16, and then the implementation plans that are currently underway that were developed based upon the Business Process Reviews. So, we are hoping that this is all-encompassing, that it will include both the review and the implementation.
Yeah, and we're, I would just caution us to go beyond hope. It's quite a significant amount. But I get where, I mean, I understand that it's, at least from what is presented, that it's necessary. I just would like to see us apply a little rigor in being a little bit more frugal with the spending, especially in this regard, and have accountability on what we're getting in return on our investment.
Okay, so...
Madam Chair, excuse me. Is it better to wait until Vice President Gable is done with her report to ask questions? Or should we ask her as the item comes up?
Well, Vice President Gable, how do you feel about that?
Whatever you prefer.
I have one question regarding the page that we're on with the deficit analysis. And maybe, it's not even a question. Maybe you can just direct me to where I need to look. I'm actually, I think one of the best indicators of budget trends is to compare last year's and the year before. And I'm looking at last year's budget, and I can't find the BPR anywhere. I remember reading something about it, but was that included in the 2015-2016 budget?
A small portion was included in the budget in 15-16. But where you see it is in the Professional Services line item. And so, we don't have a specific line item that says Business Process Reviews. We're using the classification of expenditures that are spelled out within the Budget and Accounting Manual that the Chancellor's Office puts out. And so, the services that are provided for this fall under Professional Services. So, that's where you see that.
Okay, and I appreciate that. And I think the only reason why I'm asking is because 5.5 million dollars is not chump change. So, to see such a huge line item on a budget and to not have a reference point of where it was in years past is a concern to me. Also, I'm trying to understand, I heard what you said specifically, what each line item will cover. But for the layperson, they can pretty much figure out what a Presidential Search is. They might be able to figure out what a Classification Study is. But could you just spend a minute explaining the BPRs? Because we're talking about technology and innovation and taking our students, you know, offering them the best that we can, which is what makes us great, truly. But it's such a large amount of money. I don't want it to just be absorbed in conversation. And the same thing for the mandated cost carryover. You know, could you elaborate on that?
Yes, so what a Business Process Review is, is you have a consultant come in. They sit down with all of the, I'm going to say, the super-users of a particular type of software. So, let's use Financial Aid. And what they do is they come in and they say, okay, well, how do you process the Financial Aid applications? How do you notify students that their application has been received? How do you notify students that they have been approved for Financial Aid? How do you disperse or provide the money to the students for Financial Aid? So, they're walking you through every single step that it takes to process an application, you know, and so on. So, it goes from application all the way to dispersment and everything in between. So, if the student has to be audited, you know, there's a certain percentage of the students that we have to audit their records. How does that process work? How are they tagged? And they'll go through and they'll flowchart, you know, where it is. And then, what they do is they match that up with what can you do within the system? So, what can the computer system do for you? So, we may be doing a process over here that is completely manual, where, you know, we're writing down a list of students that we have to audit. And then, we're writing down in an Excel spreadsheet that, yes, we audited them. We got their 1040 forms and so forth. But yet, we may have that capability to do it in the system, and we just didn't know about it, because it was a change. And so, the consultants are trying to match up what we need to do, what we're required to do, and what we can have the system do for us that they see that we're doing manually. And that's part of the implementation. You know, another part of the implementation is we may have to redesign some of the, they're called tables, of the setup in the computer system of what we have in the setup. We may have to redesign those in order to capture the information, which takes the time and the programming that is necessary to do it. So, it is a very extensive process that takes coordination with the consultant, with the staff that know the system best, and then with information technology if there's any programming that is needed. Does that help?
It really does. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I was, and this might not even be the right line item, but I remember somewhere along the line, I was trying to prepare for our meeting with the budget. And I remember reading or hearing something that there had been $3 million used for a similar service or something last year. The number 3 million sticks out in my mind. And I want to say that it had something to do with revamping existing program or procedures for what we did. And I was under the impression that this 5.5 million was, you know, an increase to that.
This is an increase to what we provided in 15-16. So, we're expand, you know, I don't remember off the top of my head how much was completely allocated in 15-16. It was some of the one-time mandated cost money. And then, we did go forward and allocate some more funding, kind of based upon the recommendations of the Budget Advisory Committee.
Okay, thank you very much.
And then, I think your second question was mandated cost carryover. So, that was part of the one-time funds that we got last year. And, you know, some of those things that are part of the mandated cost carryover include, like the website design that we didn't spend all the money on, the communication plan implementation. Some of the professional development is included in that number as well.
Trustee Baxter. President Baxter, may I ask a question? I, I'm sorry, we're really getting stuck on this, but I failed to ask, what's this number based on? Is it like based on consulting fees? Does it include soft costs? Is it like, as far as a projection goes? Because I know we let out the Professional Services contracts. And given Trustee Malauulu's good points, it made me think that the number, is that based on contracts that were led? Or we're forecasting based on previous contracts? That that's what it's going to be for this year?
Right, so we took the experience of what we spent for the BPRs, as well as what we're spending on the implementation to do the three, and really, we're working on the two. We're working on Financial Aid and we're working on Academic Services at this point in time. So, using the knowledge of what it was costing to implement those things and knowing that we were tackling much larger areas with Admissions and Records and Counseling, Human Resources and Payroll, Accounts Payable and Warehouse, was kind of how we came up with the number within the Budget Advisory Committee.
So, this includes Professional Services and soft costs?
It's all, it's all Professional Services.
Okay, so it doesn't include staff costs? It's just all professional?
It could include staff costs. I think if we make a determination down the line that we need to hire, for instance, a project manager, you know, that would come out of these funds, which we do currently do have a project manager that is helping us with this. So, that is coming out of the current year's allocation fund. So, it could include staffing. It could include overtime if that's required.
And it's been factored in presumably? And how's it going so far? Are we getting our bang for our buck for the consulting fees?
Yes, I think it is going well. You know, one of the things that we have up and running already is the CCC Apply, which is our online application. We are, I forget, the 106th district, I think, that implemented CCC Apply statewide. You know, one of the, one of the stories that Sylvia Lynch, our Chief Information Technology Services Officer likes to say is during registration, fall registration, because CCC Apply went live on August 1st. So, as people were in line, you know, we used to require that employer, or that students sign their application form. So, even if they went online and did an application, they then had to print out a form, sign it, and mail it back to Admissions and Records before they would process their application. That is no longer required. And so, when the staff in Admissions and Records realized that they no longer have to have all these forms for students to sign, they kind of had a party and just threw up all the forms, you know, at once, and were celebrating. So, that is one success story that we do have. You know, I think there's a lot of excitement within Financial Aid. They are working towards implementation. We won't see the fruits of that labor until the 17-18 application period, because the applications are due in October, and we're not going to be able to get all the changes made by October. That's, you know, two weeks away. Academic Services is another area that we are working diligently in. Course repetition is one of the items that we're working on. We're hoping to have that up and running for spring registration. You know, so there are things that we are seeing the fruits of our labor. They are taking a little bit longer than we had anticipated. But I think it's a good process, and I think the staff are really encouraged and excited and working through them.
I guess, continue.
Okay. So, here's the breakdown of the Unrestricted Journal Fund revenue. We have it broken down into the major items of the revenue that comes in. You can see federal revenue. We don't receive very much federal revenue in the Unrestricted Journal Fund, only about $78,000. Our apportionment revenue, we are budgeting to receive $112 million. And this is the money that is generated, assuming that we meet the 20,775 FTEs. It's about a $1.1 million decrease from the 15-16 actual. And, you know, that's twofold. So, one of them is, we received an additional 2.2 million in 15-16 for our 14-15 FTEs. So, that was where I talked about, we borrowed additional revenue, or additional FTEs to earn that money. And then, that 2.2 million dollar increase is offset by the $1.1 million in the base revenue. So, overall, we will, we're projecting to receive about $1.1 million less in apportionment than we did in 15-16. The other state revenue, we are budgeting just over 8.6 million. Again, this is a significant decrease from the prior year of 9.7 million. That's related, 9.4 of that is related to the one-time mandated costs. The other $300,000 is related to our reduction in state lottery revenue. When our FTEs goes down, our state lottery revenue goes down, because we are paid on an FTS basis for that. And then, on the local revenues, we're budgeting about a $366,000 decrease. And that is because we put in the, every year, we have to write off, an accounting term is called a bad debt expense, which basically means it's tuition and enrollment fees that students haven't paid. We have to write that off. And so, we budgeted additional $300,000 for that in the current year. So, this is what I just covered. You can see here graphically what our revenue is made up of. You know, we are so dependent upon our FTEs, which you've heard me say already. As you can see, 90% of our funding in the Unrestricted Journal Fund comes from our state apportionment, or basically the FTEs that is generated. Now, that state apportionment piece is broken into four different parts. So, we have the general apportionment that comes from the state. We have the EPA, that's the Education Protection Account money, or the Proposition 30 funds. We have property taxes and we have enrollment fees. So, overall, 74% of that apportionment is coming from either the state journal apportionment or the EPA funding. Very little is coming from fees or property taxes. On the expenditure side, you can see overall there, as we mentioned earlier, we're budgeting $134.4 million in expenditures, which is about a $1.9 million increase. On the academic salaries, this has decreased just slightly, $150,000. And you may ask, if we hired 28 faculty, how has this decreased? But remember, we did that supplemental early retirement plan, and we had 32 faculty retire. So, this is taking that into account. On the classified salary side, we did add 21 new classified positions, and we restored six classified positions. It also includes two additional management positions that were added into the budget. For the benefits, we're budgeting $35 million, which is a $2 million increase over the prior year. I've already mentioned, we had our STIRS go up, our PIRS went up, as well as our annual required contribution for retiree benefits. And since we did do the early incentive for the faculty, we do have a $500,000 repayment that is in here that we didn't have in 15-16. We've covered, on the services side, why that has increased, that 7.1 million dollar increase in services. You know, $5.5 million of that are the BPRs. Another, you know, $700,000 is related to mandated costs, and then our utilities are going up. Capital outlay, we have decreased from the prior year by about $2 million. And that is due to spending some of the one-time funds that were allocated in 15-16, primarily on instructional equipment. And then, on the other outgo side, again, we have a $7.7 million decrease due to the one-time funds that were allocated in 15-16 that we don't have in 16-17.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
President Baxter. Vice President Gable, on the classified salaries, you said it counts for 21. Is that I hear right?
Yes.
Okay. So, of that, how many have we actually hired today of the 21? And you mentioned there's six that were restored, right?
Yes, six were restored. You know, I wouldn't know. I don't know if Vice President Delgado has the number of how many have been hired. We did stagger some of them that wouldn't have a start date until January 1. I'm trying to look to see how many were staggered on the classified side.
Well, I'd just like to see, if you don't have it available, that's fine, perhaps...
We'd have to do an analysis of that, Trustee Zia.
Yeah, if we could come back, just, I'd like to give this a priority. I know we have allocations for it, and we've heard from our classified staff. I agree with this line item in the budget. It's just a matter of prioritizing the hiring. If we could do that, that would be great.
Yeah, since we're basically at the beginning of the fiscal year, we're still underway with the hiring of these individuals or positions.
Well, and I'm sure that the priority is to hire the faculty because of start of classes.
Well, we have both processes going in tandem.
Oh, okay. Oh, wow, okay.
Rose, do we have a timeline that we're aiming for, for the 21 classified?
You know, a lot of it's, we try and get it done as soon as possible, but a lot of it's dependent on people's schedules and how quick they can get their committees together and all of the information we need from them, et cetera. So, you know, it'll vary according to those that are engaged in that process.
Well, yeah, if we can make sure we give it priority, that would be great.
Definitely.
That's all I had on that slide.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, moving into graphically, what do our expenditures look at, look like? Sorry. You can see that we are spending 84.9% on salaries and benefits. So, that's of the $134.4 million. 38% are going towards academic salaries, 20% towards classified salaries, and then 26% towards benefits. salaries and then twenty-six percent towards benefits. This graph here just kind of shows us a seven-year trend of some of the major trigger points that we look at. So as I just mentioned, the salaries and benefits as a percentage of total expenditures, you can see there that historically we range around eighty-eight percent. What we've done, if you look on the sixteen seventeen adopted budget side, I mentioned that we are at eighty-four point nine percent. If we take out the one-time allocations of the mandated costs, we would be at eighty-seven point two percent.